I open the meeting to comment from the public at this time. Anybody who wish to address the board may do so at this time. There being no one to address the board at this time, that closes section of the meeting. You'll have another chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of previous meeting. All have copies of the minutes. Is there any additions or deletions?
Will the minutes be accepted as presented?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Bills. Mr. Treasurer, is there any additions or deletions?
No, there is not.
Make the motion make acceptable bills as printed.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondence.
The first piece of correspondence we have is from New York State Power Authority. There are several parts of this. I'll read just one and then I'll turn it over to the mayor for explanation. This is regarding return of the Economic Development Program Incremental Power. This is pursuant to your request, the incremental portion of your allocation under the Municipal and Corporate Economic Development Program will be returned to the power authority effective December 1st. Subsequently, this portion of the allocation will be obtained from sources other than the power authority. Do you want to...
What that is, is that we get an allotment of hydro power and anything that we use over that hydro is incremental power. And for the economic development, we get that incremental as part of their package. We get so much hydro and so much incremental. Well, power authority's incremental is a lot higher than we can purchase in somewhere else and it means savings about $250,000 a year to us to do this. This is a recommendation from the Municipal Electric. We sent the letters and of course, it started. They say we can't do it, it's against the law or against our contract, and now it's all turned over to the Municipal Electric Attorney's to fight it out. That's essence what's about. There's only 930 kilowatts that we're turning back, which is half of the 850 kilowatt allocation that we get. Eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry, eighteen fifty. I'm sorry. Any questions from the board on it? It's gonna be another legal battle. That's why we pay them lawyers all that big money down there.
Okay?
Okay.
The second piece of correspondence we have is from Time Warner Cable. It's regarding a rate increase. I believe everybody who is a subscriber to Time Warner Cable received a letter informing them of this, but as the village being the franchising agent, we are obliged to bring this up at board meeting. I won't go into detail because I think everybody has a copy of this rate change. The last piece of correspondence we have is from the State of New York Office for Technology. It said, "As you know, the Office for Technology has grown from a small 15-person task force established by government attacking into a dynamic state agency with several hundred employees. They are charged not only with developing the state's technology policies, but also implementing and maintaining a variety of statewide programs, including the governor's e-commerce initiative and the state's network. As an effort to communicate information and share ideas, OFT is hosting an open house to be held on Wednesday, January 31st, 2001, at the Empire State Plaza in Albany. It will be an excellent opportunity to learn the latest about OFT initiatives and participate in discussions. I invite you and your staff to attend this event."
Anybody in the board want to go? You could go down and listen how they're spending their money. About $13 million to put a statewide radio network in for emergency services, which does not include the fire service. Figure that one out. Strictly for the state police. That's it?
That's it.
Reports of mayor and trustees. First thing on my agenda is the NICOM conference, legislative conference in Albany, which will be held on February 25th through 27th, Sunday through Tuesday. Early registration is $165, and registration after February 9th is $200. If I plan to attend, any other board member plan to attend?
I will not.
Nobody else? So we can send that in. One person. That's an interesting conference. I always enjoy it. Last Friday night, we had our parade of toys for the young people. Very enjoyable. I believe that things went off really well. A lot of people, special people have to be thanked, that Ben is taken care of, that pitch in every year. We got approximately 150 kids, I would think there. For what it's worth, the village looks real nice. The decorations, I think they really did a heck of a nice job getting everything up, getting it all lit. There were some nice comments on it. Everything went really, really well, and I personally want to thank Ben because she always spearheads us up. I know it's a lot of work on her part, but it's like, I think it's one of the few things that she really does that she really enjoys. Evaluation on state dock. Mr. Ferris, I have your report here, sir. Looks like we can do something with it.
Yes, we've spoken to the engineer, Northland Engineering, and we've explained to them that unless they're planning on doing something drastic there to increase the load on the dock, that that dock is going to stay there for a long time to come. And so, so I think that some of the numbers that they compared in their report, the numbers were very preliminary, I think that as they proceed, they'll be able to sharpen the pencil and use the dollars in other places besides shoring up the foundation that they got.
Thank you. I have one other thing, just a couple things that are on the agenda. One, last month, we authorized Mr. Murnane, our attorney, Tom Murnane, to represent both Austin and Harris, on the change of property. And the one thing that we have to authorize is to add the language as it is. We have to authorize that to Murnane to put in contract because they got a letter from what they're saying, you know, that's the way they'll give us the property as it is. I need a motion on that, please.
I think a motion.
Got a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. That means we get the property with all the trees. Next thing is, last week, trustee Duprah, myself, superintendent of the county, board of legislators, received a nice recognition from the county, a nice plaque on our zepomuscle project, which we can hang alongside that plaque from the conference of mayors. It's always nice to be recognized for something good. And last thing, I request a next executive session for administration personnel.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. We'll call along trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Duprah.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
And that's it for me. Trustee Moore.
Well, I understand the public works superintendent, that's going to give the report tonight. Person, so Robert, you can go ahead.
Because then, your own report is exactly the same, the boys aren't doing anything different. You know, they're just working on their winter projects, ready for snow, and there's no activities going at this time. Not much reported.
Now, the update in the library steps, I think they're all completed now.
The library steps are 95% complete. We're waiting for the treads to arrive and we'll put them on this month. I believe you've seen a copy of the bill. The contractor asked for a partial payment. We recommend a partial payment to the contractor for the work they've done to date. And in addition to the treads, there will be some additional work that they'll do in the spring, just the final cleanup and touch-up, things that'll feel better in mild weather. So after they've sent us their final request for payment, we'll withhold some money to make sure that we get them back in the spring.
All right. Thank you. You did a wonderful job. That's all I have. Thank you, trustee Moore. Trustee Duprah.
I have a monthly water plant work report. Once again, I think they're moving along in a smooth, orderly manner, and they then are doing their monthly work in addition to several other ongoing projects. As I think we all well know, there have been some south winds, so they've had to use the alternative intake. I believe most of us read the paper regarding lead and copper testing that had been completed in the notices that have belonged to the residents. They're continuing to work on the problem with the Spark Tech equipment. In addition to that, I have received a copy of a certificate that the water plant has received in Albany's entirety earlier this year. I filled out a questionnaire from the AWA, which is an American Water Works Association regarding safety on the job. The water plant staff had gone over six years without a lost time accident at work. As of November 26th, 2000, we have now been told 2,800 days, or in other words, seven and two-thirds years. I feel this is quite an accomplishment. I'm proud to be part of the staff and I commend my fellow employees on this accomplishment that was written by chief water plant operator Gary Malinsky. The certificate basically says warrant of accidents to management employees of Roscoe Point in recognition of your secure safety record, and that's a year 1999. And hopefully, we will be able to receive another certificate on their behalf for more hours, another year completed of accident, lost time accident at work, without lost time accidents. Kind of hard to say. In other words, another year without having lost any time due to an accident at work. I guess that's the best way to put it. And I really appreciate Gary's bringing this to our attention because otherwise, I think sometimes we take those things for granted, and safety certainly is nothing that should be taken for granted. And the fact that they're concerned about it and they're proud of it, I think, is we're all concerned. Other than that, I would request that Doug Ferris give us an update on the ongoing water project, please.
An item I'd like to just briefly talk about is the ongoing work with the new water storage tank. And what we've done in the last couple of weeks is work on the funding application for the state for this project. Our Senator Letourneau, treasurer, was a great help to me to pull together the data. We need the financial data along with that application that Tisdale is finalizing for us. And also, on the water storage tank, I would like the board to resolve that I go ahead and see what some bids for subsurface exploration, for some drilling at the proposed tank location or locations. And I'd like some direction to do that so we could drill next month, so we can sign the foundation. And that's all I have.
Need that in the motions, Mike?
If possible.
So move.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I guess for the benefit of everybody, that soil testing, so that we know whether we can put a tank there. No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Duprah. Trustee Menard, according to this, you have nothing.
I did have one. We got some correspondence with, I believe, the town of Champlain today on our fire contract. We need to add a paragraph in there in our contract that states, "This agreement shall continue for a period of one year from the first day of January 2001. However, this contract shall terminate at such time as the joint village, town, village and town of Champlain Fire District begin providing fire protection to the town excluding the village across this point." And I'd like to make a motion that we add this to our contract.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Trustee Hoprow. Thank you. Trustee Menard.
Thank you, trustee mayor. Just a couple of items. First off, you should have in front of you a wastewater report from town reef. Any questions on it? There are things to be, things to be moving down there.
And also removed.
Moving.
I got it.
Did you, George?
Yeah, I got it.
And Doug, do you have anything on the update on the sewer project?
Sure. Similar to the water storage tank work, we're putting together a funding application for the sewer projects. And Ernie Barkum was a great help to me in the past couple of weeks, providing data so that we could take care of that application also.
Thank you, Doug. It's almost there.
Thank you, trustee Hoprow. Bev?
Yes. The Weir brothers construction, they would like permission to proceed with the second phase, and Bob Clark has reviewed that, I think Bob Rusko has, and I believe our engineer has. And I need to have permission from the board because that needs to be in our minutes because the Weir brothers need that.
Uh huh.
So I would need a motion.
Make a motion.
Proceed.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now you know you're not a new 500 to the table next to there.
I would ask the board to make a motion to approve the mayor attending the NICOM conference so that it will be in minutes the way it should be.
Second.
I mean, that he prepares the appropriate travel application.
Right. I got time, though. Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
As I informed you at the last meeting, we have two employees who have completed their probation successfully as per their supervisors. I have arranged for them to have their pre-employment physical. That is fine. I want permission from the board to purchase them their uniforms now that they are full-time But I just asked Mr. Letourneau if he could find the funds to do it, make sure that he could.
I make a motion.
That's all I said.
I have a motion. I prefer it for you.
Second.
Motion. Second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And I just want to echo the mayor's thank yous for the Christmas parade of toys. And every year, it seems to get bigger, it seems to be more successful. It's very nice to have all those little children and Santa Claus. And I want to thank everybody that helped, and the water plant employees were really, really helpful that night. They did a fine job decorating the water plant.
Thank you, Bev. Marsha.
The auditor was in today from Baltimore cheating, and she'll be back on Wednesday.
Things going pretty good with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert.
Yes, I have two. I have one for the water. I heard the report on the water that we use the ultimate intake. We have an AMIAD system that we're supposed to be using instead of an intake. That's why we spent all that money. Is that thing not working?
I don't know.
The AMIAD system is not going to be able to remove the turbidity from the lake so that we can avoid using that alternate intake. The AMIAD will be useful for removing shells and art particles, but it's not going to get out the clay itself.
Where'd Dave Pulster come back and rectify that? I thought that was what was happening with AMIAD. I mean, that's a lot of money not to be using. Lots of money.
It's gotta be used. It's gonna be used when we have those events where we have lots of shells slumping off the walls, or when we have a big kill from pouring injection or something, clear the boat for that. And that will keep all of those shells out of the DE filters, that keep all of those shells out of our sewer plant, out of pumps, et cetera. And, but that's really what those are. Those are automatic backwashing filter strainer. They're a big strainer. They are not going to, even though that exuberant sales rep they had, that statement that day about how if we had the AMIAD, we wouldn't need the DE anymore, he was, he was not appropriate in saying that.
Did he ever come back? Did he ever come back? They were supposed to come back a couple times.
Oh, they've come back a couple times. But you see, the only thing they could do is go to one size smaller screen, but if they do that, it's still not going to get down to that microscopic clay and silk levels. That, when that turbidity kicks up to values of 60 or 100, it's just, the AMIAD won't get rid of it. It'll get rid of the big stuff, but the small stuff will still go through to our DE filters. The DE filters will clog and then we'll be right where we would be if we get to go to the alternate intake. So they're, they're a big automatic strainer for big particles, like zebras and shells.
See, I thought they were coming back and they were going to be electrified. That's why you weren't using it.
No.
That was, that was my understanding.
Okay.
When you guys left, was that the last time they weren't doing nothing? The only thing is this, I mean, you know, it's a lot of money to take shells out, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
A lot of money to take shells out. And we're not talking 50 bucks.
No. No, but the decision was made a long time ago that we weren't going to have manual strainers, we were going to have automatic strainers, and that's an automatic strainer. And so, and then we got our hopes up as we went through the project by the exuberant sales guy that this was going to wash our dishes and everything too. And then we find out what it's made for is a mechanical strainer that takes out big stuff, like shells, but it's not going to avoid our using that alternate intake when we have those high sound rates.
You didn't get a very satisfied answer on that.
Well, just, you know, I thought we weren't going to be using that anymore, George.
I understand.
I thought we went through all this. I mean, you know, like, we were, we were getting in trouble for using that.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, when you are going to get in trouble again using it, because it's not the cleanest water there is. There's a lot of sodium in that. But anyways, second one is electrical department, truck. Okay? We've got two trucks. John got the state contract, and I'd like to have you guys make a decision on which one we're going to go for. You can pick up a half-ton for $14,500, or a three-quarter ton for $17,500. And these are, these are not four-wheel drives, these are single-wheel drives? Two-wheel drive?
Uh huh.
And one's a Chevy, one's a Ford. I'd like to have you guys make a decision tonight so we can see which one we can buy here.
Bev, I have a question, sir. Which one would you prefer?
Well, when we first started talking about this, it was a two-wheel drive half-ton. Then it got foiled into a three-quarter ton, two-wheel drive. Then it got foiled into a four-wheel drive. And I think what we started off with, we wanted just a plain half-ton, something the boys could work out of the backup on the jobs. In the wintertime, you know, we're not plowing snow or anything like that, so we didn't really want four-wheel drive. So I'd like to have you guys, you know, make a decision which one you want to go on this. The three-quarter ton, two-wheel drive is $17,500.
$3,000 difference.
Yeah. And a half-ton is $14,500.
What are you going to be doing?
And if you want four-wheel drive, you gotta add a couple, $2,500 each one of them.
What are these three-ton, you know, Bobby?
Those are both V8s.
They don't, they don't count six. Where are you going to be doing that?
On state contract, they don't, they won't give you some. Don't play with them small. Because you, you know, you're, you're talking a work truck here, you're not talking the average guy riding up down the street. Yes, it, one's a Chevy, one's a Ford.
Ford's a three-quarter ton.
The Ford is a three-quarter ton. But what you gotta remember, you gotta hire back in, it's harder to work out of. The half-ton is closer.
You prefer the half-ton?
As far as I'm concerned, I think the half-ton for what they've got right now is not bad. And, you know, eventually, you're going to replace that, that orange truck, and when you do, you get them a good truck there, and that's about what they need.
Well, half-ton's still better than S10.
Yes, definitely. I mean, it's what kind of money you want to spend.
Jordan Barton.
Can I make a motion? Have you accept the half-ton?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I mean, I think that's what we originally...
We originally approved this once, I think. We already approved the purchase, it's a big contract.
I'm pending on the price.
Yeah, right.
And that's what we got. You find the question on the price.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of the vote by using sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Robert. Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Nothing. Doug, you had your turn. Good night. I love these things. We're for recess at 7:26.
Open to public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Opening up to the public again. Anybody wishing to address the board? There being no one to address the board, close that section, and we're in for recess.
Make a motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We're in recess for five minutes. We're in recess for five minutes.